All right, I'm just waiting for YouTube Live to start up. And we are good to go.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I see that Senator Lesser is with us and the rest of our subcommittee crew. There he is. Commissioner, in a subcommittee I was in earlier today, it would just be great for you to walk through the answers to the questions. So can we pull up that document?
Do you want us to jump right in?
Sure, that'd be great. And then folks on the subcommittee, just raise the virtual hand or wave at us if you have questions.
Great, thank you so much. Jen Proto's managing the PowerPoint for us. So, thank you for the invitation today. I'm joined by Suzette DeBeetham Brown, who's our deputy commissioner, Jasmine Berry, who's our fiscal administrator, Jen Proto, our legislative liaison, and L. Britton, who is our policy person for ADS. So hopefully, we'll be able to answer all the questions you may have. Go ahead, Jen. So we're going to start. There were a couple of questions about the policy revisions in the governor's recommended budget. So one was fall prevention and one was workers rehabilitation. So one of the questions about fall prevention is who it's typically targeted for. So it's typically for adults age 60 and up. We have a number of activities. I spoke during the appropriations presentation about the fact that we had had a contract with Yale University, and they're no longer able to do this work, but we do have a lot going on in the fall prevention space. This is funded by the insurance fund. And throughout the year, we do Taiji Kwan, which is Moving for Better Balance. So that is a program that's really designed to work with older adults, help improve stability, posture, coordination, walking, and range of motion. We work through a contract with Connecticut Community Care, and they have 18 sites statewide. We also have a partnership with Department of Public Health, where we've been able to, with them, reestablish a fall prevention coalition to share best practices, develop a standardized approach to fall prevention, along with shared access to resources. So our Falls Free Connecticut, as it's called now, has a current roster exceeding 100 members, and it's led by a steering committee of professionals. So that's a separate piece. We are about to start mini-grants to municipalities who are implementing the National Fire Protection Association's Steps to State Safety. And then we have an RFP that's ready to go out that is going to add one additional fall prevention innovation contract. So that's the bulk of the work that's happening in fall prevention. Very exciting work there. Any questions on that?
Yeah, question. So there's the bill moving through the legislature right now that seeks to reform the way the insurance fund operates. Would that affect, I don't know if you've been monitoring that and whether that would affect the funding that you get from them for this purpose?
Thanks for the question. We haven't heard that it would impact us, but it's possible. This is 100% funded out of the insurance fund. So that's something we will definitely keep our eyes on.
Okay, thank you.
And so the other policy revision was to our workers rehabilitation services. And I know there were some questions there about the ages served. I think we answered that. But basically, anybody who is eligible for workers' compensation, this is a voluntary program where...
If I had a question on the fall prevention, can we jump back there? I'm sorry, I don't think, maybe I've done this right. So I'm just trying to understand, we had 100 members served for 362,000, is that about right? Or 100 different? I'm just trying to figure out numbers and how we are going to be able to serve our population with, you know, almost half that, not quite half, but...
Yeah, I think that what we're trying to do is particularly through Falls Free Connecticut, through the coalition, is to bring all different partners together to really standardize, get resources out, get information out. And that was the 100 members that I was talking about. We have a current roster of over 100 members in that particular coalition. And they meet quarterly. They've created a statewide resource guide. So I think we're trying, while we're doing the Moving for Better Balance throughout the state, we're also doing Falls Free to get a lot of people involved, and then working with the municipalities to implement some individualized programming there.
Okay, I guess I'm just still trying to figure out how we're going to be able to serve as many people with half the funds. But you feel like you can do the same work for half the money? Is that what I'm understanding?
I think because we're rethinking how we were doing it, we were doing it a certain way when we had the contract with Yale. And I think, you know, the opportunity to still provide the Moving for Better Balance at the same level, and then reinvigorating the coalition, I think that helps us expand our reach even further, hopefully, than we were able to do before, because there's a lot of really committed individuals trying to make sure that we get some consistent messaging out. So I think it's a little bit of a change in model. Instead of continuing the way we were moving, it's changing the way we're approaching it and doing it as a collective.
Okay, great. Well, I'm looking forward to seeing how that goes next year when we meet again. Thanks.
I have a question too. There were a bunch of that, actually, all kind of flowered up at the same time. The change in model, is there anyone in the coalition who does a home visit to see if there are throw rugs or things like that in the home?
I think that the coalition is really getting information out there. But I think part of the work that we want to do with the municipalities, that the fire departments and first responders, I think that is to be able to get out home safety messaging. And also, once the first responders and community partners are trained, they're able to leverage some wraparound services and actually look at things in the home. Look at smoke alarms, look at grab bar installations. And I'm sure, as part of that, since we all know how nasty falls can be from those throw rugs, I think that's part of what they're looking at as well. I don't have a full list of the committee roster, but I can get that. And I know there are professionals from a variety of different disciplines. So I'm sure that that messaging is going to be able to get out there.
Okay, and the second question, and I should know this, and I don't remember, is does our database in the public health department then include decoding on unintentional injury? Include any information about falls that can help us to pinpoint what's happening?
That's a great question. I know that we're working on a memorandum of agreement with the Department of Public Health, and that's something that, we can take a look at that and see if there's an opportunity to share that data and bring that data to the coalition. I'm not sure if that's available to the coalition already, but definitely a great question for us to follow up on.
Well, it's Tom's data, so I don't know what the bureaucratic way of doing it would be, but just wondering. Thank you.
How are you doing? I'd be interested in knowing more about the initiatives that we're doing, like, are we doing anything for home modification, physical therapy access, or community-based exercise, or, you know, some things that are related to, you know, the work? And then how it's actually getting out in regards to marketing for seniors? Because we have a lot of seniors that don't, that might not go to, like, senior centers or to all the areas in which information is relayed. So I'm just wondering how we're getting out to homebound seniors that don't get out? Or are you sending anything? Because I haven't received anything to share. And maybe it's because I didn't ask, but I'd like to get information so I can also share it to inform our seniors what's available. Because just going to different meetings in town, I'm not hearing a lot about some of the things that are going on.
Yeah, thanks for the question, Representative Nolan. So one of the pieces of what are we doing sort of at the individual level, I think the best example of that is the Moving for Better Balance that we talked about. That's at 18 sites throughout the state at this point, and really works one-on-one with individuals. In terms of the marketing and the outreach, I think that's going to be the, one of the best things to come out of this reinvigorated coalition to address falls prevention, because it's trying to come up with a standardized approach, trying to find out the best way to get that information out there. So once we have all of that information available, we can definitely share it through this committee as well.
Yeah, and I'm just a little worried about the cut and being able to keep up with working with as many people, or even growing the list of people, cutting it, I think, by the amount that's specified. I'm kind of finding it difficult to see how we're going to continue to do as much or even grow in what we're doing. So I will probably be speaking up about, you know, less money than more money. So I just wanted to share that.
Yeah, thanks for that. And just to reassure the group there, I know that we had talked about it in the presentation last week about the fact that we had a partnership with Yale, and we were able to do some of this work, but we haven't been working with them for a couple of years. Our intention is to do an RFP, so to bring more, to get more funds out into the community. So it's not taking anything away. It just means that the dollars for that RFP will probably be able to do one new project. But it's an additional project to what we have now, and the coalition itself is going to help us expand our reach and our network. I can't see any other hands. Sorry, I wasn't seeing them before because I didn't have my participant list on. But so workers rehabilitation was the other policy revision that the committee had asked us to provide some additional information. So this program is a voluntary program for individuals who are injured on the job and who voluntarily decide that they want to, they're getting workers' compensation, and they want to come for rehabilitation services to get back to gain full employment. So that, one of the questions was about eligibility, and there isn't an age limit on it. The program looks at whether the individual has a documented compensable injury through workers' compensation, whether they were assigned permanent restrictions, individuals where there's no light duty work available, and US citizens, permanent residents, or individuals with a work permit. So those are the eligibility requirements. And then if somebody's eligible, again, it's voluntary, but they have access to vocational counseling, vocational evaluation, aptitude and interest testing. And then we can do formal training, whether that's school training, on-the-job training, and then we do job support services and job placement to make sure that people can get reconnected. We've seen a couple trends in this program over the past few years. There are a couple of things that really drive the referrals to the program. So one is the number of workers' compensation claims throughout the state. And there has been a decrease in claims, which is great. We want to see that statewide, particularly during COVID. There's also the referrals or applications. We get a lot of our referrals from judges, and there are some vacancies right now, and that, about 80% of our referrals come from judges. So that is having an impact. And we also had some vacancies in staffing. And so we had fewer individuals to be working with individuals, but we're fully staffed now. So that combination has led to a decreased need. And so we can absorb the funding change for this program for '26 and '27. Any questions on that? Okay, I don't see any. So next is our new service bureau for individuals who are deaf, deaf-blind, or hard of hearing. As I explained in the committee meeting, we are thrilled that we have a new director who started on December 27. One of the questions that the committee really wanted to get to, this position is funded with ARPA dollars. And so we were asked specifically when the funding would run out. So this chart shows that, you know, paying for 13 pay periods in fiscal year '25 and 17 pay periods in fiscal year '26. So it doesn't get us through fiscal year '26. It gets us through about mid-February. So that's some of the information that folks were looking for. We're using per DM providers, interpreter providers right now, to support this individual who is deaf-blind. And that support was not budgeted. We were also legislatively directed to hire an administrative assistant, but there were no funds provided for that with the ARPA allocation. So at this point, we're focusing on ensuring that the director has access to an interpreter and to have effective communication with our communities. So that's our, hopefully, answers that question.
I do have a question. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's good. I'm scrolling to see if I see any hands go up. So great.
Why is there a difference in the salary amount? Or am I, is that just like $49,000 to the $64,000?
I think because the 49 is the pay periods left in fiscal year '25, and then the ones that will get us through till February of '26.
Thank you. Okay, sorry about that. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so next is the senior nutrition program. And, you know, we tried to put together some information that's responsive to the questions about really seeing the big picture of nutrition funding for older adults here in Connecticut. And it's a challenge, because there's no, there's no black-and-white answer here, because there's some funding pots that can extend over a couple of years, like some of the ARPA dollars. They show up in one year, but they can be used over a three-year period. But what we tried to show in this chart, and I know Senator Lesser in particular was asking some of these questions, this shows our federal funding from the Older Americans Act and from the Social Services Block Grant. So that's where we get the majority of our federal funding. And then it also breaks out the COVID relief funding that was available and the state funding, and tries to sort of address the issue that we have state fiscal years and federal fiscal years, and really show you some bottom-line numbers, but they can be misleading. So let me talk about just a couple of things in the highlighted piece in yellow. So the $22 million in the first year there, that includes money that also can be spread out over time. So it's not that precipitous drop that it looks like. And then the fourth box, the $10 million, is because we're only partway through the year, and we're working on a continuing resolution. We don't have all our funding yet, and we're not even 100% sure what that funding will be. So this tries to get at that with the caveat that there's some ambiguity in those numbers. Happy to try to answer any questions or get additional information if that's helpful.
Do we have individuals served anywhere with each of those fiscal years? And you may have given it to us already, and I just don't have it to hand.
We can get some additional information there. I know the question here was more about the big-picture dollar, but we can get you some additional data there.
Yeah, because my concern is when you drop off like that, that we're going to see a big drop-off in people that are served. Thank you.
And I think the state has been trying to balance that, right? So there was ARPA dollars, and then the following year, adding some state funding in to make sure we wouldn't have that precipitous drop that you just mentioned. And I think our elderly nutrition providers are doing their best to try to manage all of this. But we have seen a decrease at the federal level, as I talked about at the committee meeting. There was, one pot of dollars went down, while a couple of other pots of funding went up. So, but we don't have this year's. You can see that in the top line of the Older Americans Act funding there, but we don't have this year's yet, so we don't know exactly what that's going to look like.
I had a question. It's Rebecca Martinez. I just wanted to know if there's more information on how the federal funds were being allocated throughout the state? Because I know I've started hearing about one of the towns in my district that falls under the North Central Connecticut branch, and they're really concerned about their nutrition funding and saying that it's been reduced on the federal level pretty significantly.
Yeah, so the federal dollars are allocated through a funding formula to each of our five area agencies on aging. The area agencies on aging, then they do a competitive procurement process to get elderly nutrition providers in each of the regions. And then that funding goes out in contract to those providers. So there definitely was an uptick in the number, our levels, our levers are sort of the the number of meals provided in a day or a week. And during COVID, we obviously saw a giant uptick there. But we have said, as the ARPA dollars, those were meant to be a bridge. And as the ARPA dollars ran out, the elderly nutrition providers needed to pull back in either of those, either the number of days that they offer the meals, the number of meals available each day. There are some minimums that they have to hit. And some of the providers, because they saw the need, continued to provide meals at that higher level. So I think some of the elderly nutrition providers are seeing more of a significant impact because of that. But they were, those ARPA dollars just are not, were not sustainable. And I do think we know that, and we were able to communicate that to our providers along the way. Thank you. There was also some discussion at our meeting last week about senior centers. We have some information here about the senior center ARPA grants that were available for folks, which, so this slide includes the number of contracts that were awarded, the total amount, and the senior centers that did not request funding. And actually, the next slide is a great visual of that that hopefully will help you see sort of how your towns may have been impacted. So this piece is the ARPA grants. And then we also talk on the next page, there was a conversation in the meeting about the fact that there is no direct state funding for senior centers. There is some funding in our federal funding in our allocation from the Older Americans Act. We require that each of the area agencies on aging allocate at least 5% of their supportive services dollars to senior centers to support them. So on this chart, it shows the minimum amount that the area agencies on aging need to invest in senior centers. And we've had a range. Clearly, our AAAs know the importance of senior centers and how foundational they are in our communities. So there were ranges from 7% to 24%, even though the minimum was 5%. So we just wanted to share that information. We also, on the next page, talked a little bit about the makeup of senior centers. So more than 90% are operated by a municipality. The remainder are nonprofit agencies, so they might get regular funding from one or more towns. So typically, they rely on support from their municipalities, from program participation fees, from grant writing, and from fundraising. And there are some grants that they can get from some of our sister agencies here in the state. We do have a senior center liaison now on staff, which has been really a tremendous asset. She's been able to pull all the senior centers and the municipal liaisons together to be able to share resources, so folks are able to learn from one another, learn about some best practices and innovative ideas, which I think over time is going to be tremendous for the senior centers.
Can you go back to the first slide?
You mind sharing all these slides with the committee?
Yes, we can certainly do that. Okay, and then I think one of the last program areas that was asked about last week was the Vocational Rehabilitation Program. And one of the questions was eligibility for services. So in order to be, our Vocational Rehabilitation Program is designed to help individuals with disabilities either prepare for, enter, maintain, or advance in employment. So in order to qualify, our Vocational Rehabilitation counselors in the state determine whether somebody has a physical or mental impairment that constitutes or results in a substantial impediment to employment. And the individual has to require services to prepare for, secure, retain, advance, and or regain employment. So that's the eligibility. If somebody's on social security disability benefits, they are automatically eligible. As long as they intend to go to work, they're eligible for our services. And then I think one of the questions was also about the expansion of the R services. We did get additional funding to hire some staffing. And so this slide shows when we were able to onboard some of those. So as you'll see, some are brand-new. Some of our counselors, they started, we had some that started in September, some that started in November. So they are really going to be focusing on young adults in particular and be folded into our young adult service structure. So we anticipate that, while they're brand-new now, we anticipate that we'll be able to see an increase in the number of young adults with disabilities that we can provide services to. And then last was just to let you all know that we have our, you know, the state has been transitioning to a new website. Ours just became live this week, so we're very excited. It gets at some of the conversations we had about knowing where to go for services. This isn't so much driven by our bureaus and having to know what specific bureau or what specific program. It's more driven by what services do you need and what is it that you're looking for. So we're very excited about the new website. We think that it helps folks navigate our services a little easier. Helps if you're a person with a disability or an older adult, you're looking for particular services. It's going to help guide you there. So we'd love your feedback, but we're excited to be able to launch it and then, and get feedback from the folks that we're here to support. And that's what we had for today. Happy to answer any other questions you might have. Representative Deethan, I see your hand, but I'm not, don't know if that was...
Yeah, that's me. No, I just put this one up. And I just wanted to double-check... Yeah, that's me. No, I just put this one up. And I just wanted to double-check with the driver training program that we've proposed to switch from ADS to DMV. I'm wondering, because I think some of the drivers that are needed for these services may have to have some specialized training outside of sort of normal DMV drivers. I'm wondering, how are we able to keep consistent with, you know, what's going on sort of nationally? What's going on in terms of research and data regarding this community that is a little bit more vulnerable than the sort of traditional communities? And I'm wondering if there's any risk, or how are we going to ensure that we keep that quality and consistency when it's kind of not under ADS's roof?
Thank you for that question. So the the proposed transfer transfers our entire program, including the the three staff that are working on it now. And and they're really the heart of the program. They are folks who have learned, they've kept up with what's going on nationally. They're very person-centered in what they do, and going to DMV will allow them to take that, take the work that they do, and one, continue to focus on it and specialize for those individuals that need it. But the other benefit is that they're going to be able to share that with other driving inspectors there at DMV and 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 train more folks, so that when a person with a disability goes to DMV, they don't have to get bumped somewhere else. So one of the things we try to to make sure we have is is universal design and make sure people can access with or without a disability, they have the same access to services that everyone else has. And right now, that's not the case, because they get bumped to our agency, even if they don't need the training. And so that's what we're trying to to make sure is that people have that access regardless of whether they have disabilities. I know we've had a lot of conversations with Commissioner Guerrero and his team about this, and and they believe in the program. They want to be able to help more of their staff understand a little bit more and and maybe take down some of that that fear as a barrier of if somebody comes with a disability, you know, what's the right approach? How do I work with this individual? How do I make sure they get the services they need? So I do think it has some potential to impact the entire system that way. We will, we, the three individuals are phenomenal, and they'll be successful wherever they are, but we will continue to work with DMV to make sure that there's a smooth transition there.
Okay, that's helpful. You know, I always worry, because we have so many issues with our transportation that we hear in MayPAC over the years, and want to make sure that we are consistent and delivering the best services to folks. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair or Madam Chair.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
So I know that the agency has a legislative proposal that's currently in front of Human Services. Does your budget assume that that bill will pass? And is that?
Yeah, the the bill that we have is around redesigning our caseload formula for the way we assign caseloads for in children's services. So our teachers who work with students who have visual impairments or who are blind, we don't see a fiscal impact. It just changes the way it it modernizes what we're doing and actually aligns it more with our current practice of assigning caseloads and trying to level the caseloads to meet the needs of the students. So we don't see it as having a fiscal impact, so our budget can sustain that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Right ahead.
Just real quick, and it wouldn't be something, it didn't come up during your presentation. Since then, there's been an announcement in Washington about very dramatic cuts to the workforce and Social Security. And I'm not sure, maybe I should know, but I don't know if there is any one department that's designated for that. But if you have members, whether providers or individuals, who are on Social Security, SFDI, or on Social Security, is there any potential for a plan to have people get assistance in getting their benefits, given that federal staff are being laid off?
Yeah, that's a great question. We're we're not really sure what the impact is. They just announced some of those changes. They also include going from ten regional offices to four. So that's going to impact, we we were covered by the Boston Regional Office, and now it's Boston, New York, and Philadelphia together, their regions. So we're monitoring it. We don't, we don't have a specific plan for that yet, but we have both the the individuals who are receiving those benefits. We also have under our department the Disability Determination Services, and they're the folks who do the adjudication for Social Security for folks that apply for SSI and SSDI. So we're monitoring it there as well to see if those changes at a national level are going to have an impact on their ability to do their jobs. So right now, we're we're in a monitoring mode, and it's a great question about, you know, how we're going to help the folks that that may be impacted if they have questions, and and that's something we can we have a benefits counseling program here within our department, so we can strategize a little bit. If you have ideas, we're open to them. Feel free to reach out to me directly.
I'm still trying to find out what's going on.
Yeah, I don't think we know yet.
Making me happy. But it would affect individuals in DMS and on DDS as well. So so I, the SFDI question is a a system-wide issue, but especially if they're restricting access by internet. I mean, I don't know who has a plan, or if you, it's not purely clear to expect you to, but but I think I think we're going to have to think about it.
Yeah, thank you for raising that issue. Are there any other questions?
All right, I don't see any. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
I thank you, everyone.
Have a good day.
Thank you.